... Science.
United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Reba, roll call.
Mr. Bonomo.
Here.
Mr. Chapman.
Here.
Dr. Childs.
Here.
Mr. Early. Mr. John.
Present.
Mr. Mahalik.
Here.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Here.
Mr. Wallace.
Here.
Ms. Yanek.
Here.
Announcement of the executive session is held as follows, April 7th, 2015 on personnel, April 23rd, 2015 on personnel litigation. Public announcements and recognition, Dr. Butler.
Mr. Chapman, if I may, and Dr. Butler, for our first student recognition involving a student at the Hazleton Area Academy of Sciences, I would like to call to the podium the assistant principal there, Mrs. Ernst.
I would like to congratulate Kayla Call for being selected to attend the National Student Leadership Conference on Medicine and Healthcare in Washington DC. She will be going this June for nine days. Kayla will have the chance to explore medical career options by shadowing leaders in the medical profession. She will also learn team building skills, have experiences with students from around the country, and learn other leadership skills such as ethical decision making in the medical field, goal setting, and conflict resolution. She will go on tours of the historical sites in Washington while she's there. And I would also like to thank Mr. Michael Tuskus from Tuskus Homes and Company. Mr. Tuskus is the CEO of Tuskus Homes and manages several planned communities, one of which is Sand Springs in Drums, PA. Mr. Tuskus is sponsoring Kayla's trip by covering over $4,000 in costs for the conferences. He apologizes for not being able to be here tonight, but looks forward to meeting Kayla and her family. Congratulations, Kayla.
Thank you, Kayla and Mrs. Ernst. Dr. Butler.
Good evening. We have a number of recognitions this evening. We'd like to start first of all with the regional spelling bee. We have three students from the Hazleton area who did very well in the spelling bee. I'd like to bring those students forward if they're here this evening. Brandy Naprava, first place, from West Hazleton. Brandy? Brandy, if you'll stay a moment, please. From Freeland, Caitlin Beiler, second place. And from Heights Terrace, third place, Brian Landron. I asked Brandy to stay up here for just a moment. Brandy will be going to the national spelling bee. She's leaving on the 24th of May, correct? And what an honor, Brandy. We're so thrilled that you'll be representing our district. I'm sure we've all seen it on ESPN, and we know the pressure involved there. We won't have you spell anything now, but we wish you good luck. Congratulations. Recognizing tonight for the Luzerne County Head Start Alumni Scholarship, meeting all qualifications and requirements, Joshua Pinzaru. Joshua here tonight? Now into, thank you, Joshua. Appreciate you being here this evening. Now into the er- Now into the fine and performing arts. It gives me great pleasure to bring forward Ariano Umbreak. Ariana Umbreak. Ariana is being recognized tonight for not a single selection, but a double selection to the Allstate, Pennsylvania Allstate Choir, which is a significant accomplishment given the rigorous audition and selection process. This is quite an honor. Congratulations. It's our pleasure to recognize one of our local teens and a freshman at the high school, Hazleton Area High School, Eric Talaka, for his achievement of the Eagle Scout Award. Eric? Eric's service project was a effort at the Columbia Head Start Center, at Salem Elementary School, and Berwick. Eric, do you want to just speak briefly about the project? I did a good job of putting people on the spot.
Thank you. So basically, my project was in Berwick because my troop is out, found, is founded out in Berwick there. My project, I dug up a sandbox, removed all the sand, and took the wood sightings out of it because it was no longer good. Replaced it with mulch and then built a sandbox and put it in the mulch and kept it there. And then also, I dug six holes, built little storage boxes for the kids, and that's basically where we're going to keep their toys at. So I cemented them into the ground and stained them and painted them. That's all I did.
A great impromptu speaker, and I've got a couple of grandchildren need a sandbox, Eric. I know who to call. Now recognizing four high school students for the Newton Math Competition that occurred on March 27th at King's University. Giuliano Ivokovic, 11th grader at the Academy of Science. If you're for, if you're here, please come forward. Asa Miller, 11th grader, attends Hazleton Area Academy of Sciences. Pranjal Santija, also at the academy, and Eric Shaw from the Hazleton Area Career Center. This team of talented math students placed third at the competition. What a great achievement, gentlemen. Thank you.
Dr. Butler. You were saying 7th grade at the Hazleton Area Academy of Science. We don't have 7th grade at the Hazleton Area Academy of Science.
Did I say 7th grade?
I thought you said 11th grade.
Eleven?
Okay. I apologize.
Continue, Dr. Butler.
You have me worried, Dr. Childs. Now recognizing for the National Academy of Future Science and Technology Leaders, raising over $50,000 for the Cure Starts Now effort, Patricia Balian. And I understand that Patricia's mother was also a very strong contributor in this. Patricia, are you here this evening? Now in the area of journalism, Cougar Chit Chat staff members merited the highly coveted Spotlight Award for the school paper that has evolved in a special way over the last year. Hazleton Area won this category for promoting overall literacy through high school journalism by launching its new e-version this past winter. We're glad to recognize this evening three individuals for first-place awards. Kyra Depirzia. Her best feature writing on the article Pause and Think of the Animals. Congratulations. Calvin Lutz. For the ca, for the category of layout and page design with her work, Lots of Love for Life Skills. And finally, Yamillex Rodriguez. And she was recognized for her Pick Stitch photo collage encompassing West Side Story. And if you just saw that production at the high school, great production. And her work featured the cast, cast members at work. Congratulations, ladies. And now for the PA High School Computer Fair, placing first and third respectively, Rebecca Shell and Alia Sokolowski, Sokolowski, excuse me. Rebecca for her digital movie competition and Alia for the PA High School Computer Fair Logo Competition. And now delving into the world of athletics, we have a couple of special recognitions. First of all, the standard speaker Basketball Player of the Year. We had a male and a female selectee, Mackenzie Yori from the girls' team. And if you, I don't believe Mackenzie is here tonight. How about a nice round of applause for that? She was our invincible point guard on the girls' team this year. I had a chance to see her play several times. What a joy and privilege it is to watch her on the court. She actually, believe it or not, had a game tonight. That's why she's not here. And I know this gentleman is here, Bobby Plonudis. Bobby, you want to come forward? And if you have seen Bobby play, you know he's an inside-outside player, was a, obviously instrumental member of the team this year. What a great honor for you, Bobby. Well deserved, and we're looking forward to another year for both these players, actually. Congratulations, Bobby. And finally, in the area of swimming, we have a number of awards that were end-of-year All-Star Awards. First of all, starting with Andy Acosta. If you're forward, if you're here, please come forward. Felicia Greco. Felicia earned two honors, one including the MVP award. Jordy Soto. Again, two honors for Jordy, including first-team honors. Caitlin Flavin. Again, first-team honors. Moran O'Hara. Shelby Senko. Victoria Carroll. Megan Llewellyn. Allison Lloyd. Nicole Miller. Abby Schneider. Gerardo Aquino. Emmanuel Castro. Jorge Mankayo. Randy Pineda. And finally, Seth Plautukas, excuse me. Congratulations to all these winners.
Thank you, Dr. Antonelli.
Thank you, Dr. Butler. Mr. Chapman.
Public comment directed to the board on agenda items only. Mr. Bonomo.
No one on the list.
No one?
Uh, may I, Mr. Chapman, may I?
Yes.
Point out, just from a personal point of view, I wanted to thank the, Mr. Bromley and the Drama Club for their production of West Side Story. It was indeed a wonderful production, and it embodies the spirit that I like to see throughout this school district, whether it's the athletic teams, whether it's the Drama Club, of getting everybody involved. And that's what I'm hoping continues to happen within this school district.
Thank you, Doc. Okay, public comment, there is none. Okay, next. Approve the board meeting minutes for the regular board meeting, March 26th, 2015. Special board meeting, April 7th, 2015.
So I'll move.
Second.
Second.
Mr. Reba.
All in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Approve the Treasury Report for March 2015.
So move.
Second.
Mr. Reba.
All in favor of approving the Treasury Report, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I have a motion passes.
Dr. Antonelli.
With us this evening, we have Sarah Picard from the Millennium Group. Sarah?
Hello. Everyone in front of them should have a copy of the Millennium Board Report, as well as a copy of the Wellness Guideline that we provided to all the district employees. The top, on the second page on our report, the most important feature tonight is that we received the renewal for the 2015-16 plan year, and we have established that there would be no increase in rates. You should also have a copy of those rates that were illustrated by administration today, so they will require approval, but the good news is that there would be no increase from current year to the following year. As a result, the district had realized a reduction of 13% over the previous year as far as utilization data goes. The unfortunate part, though, we did receive on April 14th a high claimant that came in due to hyperthermia, which is totaling close to $325,000, which will also be reimbursed underneath our stop-loss coverage. So overall, we're still very effectively managing the, both the pharmacy and the RX medical trend overall. We also wanted to give you an update on the wellness program. As I indicated to you, we did distribute the Wellness Handbook to every one of the district employees. There are some value-added programs in there that are available for discounts on gyms and so forth if you don't participate on the medical plan. And everything is listed in the book, so it's a quick reference for everyone. And come June 1st, we will then be implementing the biometric screening and tie that into some of the medical utilization features, and that will be awarded most likely to a local provider that will be doing the screenings onsite here from Hazleton General. So you'll have more details on that to follow. We also want to give you an update on all the programs that Millennium did introduce during the past year as it relates to cost savings initiatives, and giving you an update on some of those cost factors, one of them being the freestanding US imaging, Teladoc, the stop-loss reduction. We're currently in negotiations right now for the next year's stop-loss to make sure that we get the best buy for the district as well. And then we also wanted to show you the reimbursements from the pharmacy manufacturers. We're now currently at a total of a $70,000 rebate that was given back to the district as it relates to pharmacy coverage. And then we will also provide you a financial performance report of the overall year for you by June 1st. There is a medical delay in claims from Northeastern Blue Cross, so for, in order for us to give you an accurate response on where you've ended your year, we will have that full data for you on June 1st and provide that information to you. But overall, we wanted to provide you the renewal rates for the coming calendar year for approval, and we also introduced what we call the Hazleton Light Plan. That is a plan that requires us to provide what we call minimum essential coverages to all employees that are part of the district. So it is a very affordable plan. We have priced it, and it is illustrated on the, on the rate sheet in front of you. Does anyone have any questions or concerns?
Anyone?
I, just one question. I've actually had several staff members contact me, I'm not exactly sure why they contacted me, but about the process of MRIs.
Okay.
And apparently, they need to call a special number. That special number then sets the MRI up.
Correct.
And it just seems like they were having some difficulty of that step.
Okay.
Of contacting this number.
Generally, if there are any issues related to the US imaging, it's a concierge phone number, it's an 800 number that they should call, and then they coordinate the appointment for the, for the member. So if there are any issues or conflicts, generally, they do fall to Millennium as well, but they are the outside vendor that coordinates those. And the reason why we use US imaging is because they've negotiated deeper discounts for the standalone facilities as well. So if there are any issues, I would encourage you to tell them to call Millennium so we can resolve the issue directly with US imaging. I haven't heard that feedback previously, but if there is a problem, I will, I will resolve it.
Okay. Thank you. I've also had several employees contact me about the fitness discounts.
Correct.
Are those forms obtained at the fitness centers or here at the administrative offices?
At the fitness centers. We provided you a directory of those discounted providers, and then they go there and they'll fill out the, complete the form to show that they're a district employee, and then they'll provide the discount to both the employee as well as the family member.
So the forms are secured at the fitness centers?
Correct. We, we can supply and we will supply the HR department those forms as well, so it's more convenient if need be.
That might be a good idea.
You might want to put it on the internet, or we'll provide it to you.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Two quick comments. One, if you could say a few words, we init, or you initiated that claims audit with Blue Cross.
Correct.
Can you give us a quick status update on that?
Yes. We, as a matter of fact, we spoke with the auditors today. We had a conference call with them today. There is a considerable amount of detail that is coming out of the eligibility file, and we believe that there are some issues related to eligibility and our records. So we, and I can't put a number on it yet, but you will have a report, a formal executive report, within two weeks. We're just waiting to do an audit on the eligibility report that was received from Northeastern Blue Cross and from the districts to validate the accuracy of it. And as soon as we do, we will then challenge Northeastern Blue Cross and hopefully obtain the recovery.
Second is, I don't know if we could deal with it here, but just, we've got to get our hands around the dependent audit, and I know you said there were some situations that came back that there may be people on that shouldn't have been on.
Yes, and I believe we were here, Krista, my associate, was here a month ago, and we did provide you that overview, and we're just waiting for the directive as to whether you would like us to remove them from the plan, or how do you want us to handle it? Because obviously, we don't have the authority to do that, but we did supply you those details, and we need to know how you would like us to pursue it going forward.
We should probably listen in our next executive session, list for discussion. Thanks.
Okay, you're very welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Curriculum and instruction, approve items 1 through 25 with one motion.
So move.
Second, questions or comments?
Several. On number five, have the, are these, the examples of areas that the students will be shadowing? Are these areas that have already been requested? What, or what does that amount to? You're talking about three different groups here. You talked about engineering firms, research labs, computer companies, you know, medical facilities? Is that, how does that fit?
Well, we would be matching the students' interests with one of those three areas.
With one of those three?
Yes.
Okay, so there will not be others added to that as students request, then?
We can possibly do that, yes, as the students express an interest, but currently, they're the three major areas of student interest.
Okay, and number 14, I, once again, would like to express my appreciation to the teachers of this district for those of you who did not attend committee meetings last week. These, these teachers in this district were canvassed to find out which would be interested in pursuing Rosetta Stone as to get a basic knowledge of Spanish, and I think it's amazing that we had 237 teachers out of our district who said, yes, we're indeed, we're interested. And it goes to the quality of the teachers we have in this district. I would like to thank them and compliment them for their, what they've done. Number 21, uh, did we get a copy of that, or do we get a copy of that?
We can provide that.
Okay.
For you.
Appreciate that. Number 23, is that already, oh, excuse me, I'm saying 21, that's 20, I'm sorry. Number 22, is that already being done at Hazleton Area High School and at the Career Center?
Yes, that's at the Hazleton Area Academy of Sciences. Mrs. Ernst is here, as is Mr. Patron, if you'd like to expand on that. He's referring to number 22, the Junior Parent Information Night.
Is that already been done at Hazleton Area High and also at the Career Center?
Yes, we have the parent information night. We also do it for the 2015.
I knew you did for the incoming freshmen, I just wasn't sure whether it was similar. Good.
And as a point of clarification, Dr. Childs, you want information on 20 and 21, or just 20?
No, just, just number 20. I'm sorry, that was my misreading of 21. I'm sorry.
Okay, yes, we can provide that to the entire board. Mr. Krasinski, possibly on board docs?
Good, thank you. That'd be great. And then finally, number twenty-five, I'm delighted that they're having a summer academy of music. How are the students being chosen? Do they volunteer, or do they want?
Again, by interest, through interest, they'll volunteer through the individual music instructors, instrumental instructors, vocal instructors at their respective schools. So, again, it's through interest.
Good. Thank you very much, Dr. Antonelli.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Mr. Reba.
Numbers one through twenty-five, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I have a motion pass.
Special education, ESL, and alternative education approve items twenty-six through thirty-six with one motion.
So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments? Mr. Reba.
Numbers twenty-six through thirty-six, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I have a motion passes.
Recommend board approve the Vine Street facility located at seven fifty-five North Vine Street for the alternative education program for the two thousand and fifteen sixteen school year.
So moved.
Second, questions or comments on number thirty-seven?
Yeah, I'll just repeat, no, please. Okay, I'll just repeat what I've stated since about two and a half years ago. Believe this type of facility does not belong in the neighborhood, not belong where it's easily accessible to people that are trying to sabotage these kids who are trying to better themselves through the educational process. Need to find a location that is more remote, and there's plenty of them out there, and we passed on a great one last year, shame on us, but this does not belong in a neighborhood. It belongs on campus, it belongs somewhere, again, that will not be easily attainable by those people trying to be a negative influence on these kids trying to turn their life away around.
I couldn't agree more with you, Mr. Mahalik. The thing that I would point out is that we are still looking, and my understanding, at least, Dr. Butler, is that, that we are working on essentially a month-to-month basis with the Vine Street facility. We are not signing on for two, three, four years. So, I see this because of its, the difference in expense and the difference of availab, of expense and the difference of facilities available. I see this as preferable to where we stand right now.
Doc, did you say that's one year?
Is it one year? I'm sorry, one year, okay, beg pardon.
Not to, not to be the dead horse, but I said until we get the program right, I'm not voting to move anywhere. I think we're still in the infantile stages. If I remember correctly, when we first looked at this building, we were told the entire building would need to be painted, and we were going to be responsible. Now I see they're going to paint it, but you're only painting three of the eight rooms. So, so much for the whole building needing to be painted. I don't believe in moving, just to move.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I mean, while we're commenting, I also think they, these students, I mean, this building is, to me, it's not up to code, it's not up to spec. Of course, it's going to pass all the things, but I'm talking, a real true intervention program, something that's designed and, you know, makes these kids look like they're worth something. I think this, again, is a rundown-looking facility, nothing against the people that own it or have it, but I just think you are where you lay yourself, and I think we deserve to give these kids something more. I stayed at this for two and a half years, and Doc, I thank you so much for advocating for these students, and I don't mean to sound harsh or unappreciative of the work that's being done, but again, I think these, we need to be in a location that is just so much more, just so much more enticing for these kids. And, you know, one of the reasons we left the place in Plains is because the way it looked, the way it felt, and yet, we're probably giving them something that is extremely similar to that. So, I think we look for something better, something that, again, will take away the environmental stimuli that will come into play on this. And also, let's consider the neighbors in that area. Let's consider the neighbors in that area.
Mr. Mahalik, I usually agree with you, and I'll agree with ninety percent tonight.
Thank you, sir.
However, I thought we left Plains to save money.
Well.
And I think that was the reason why we brought it back, was to save money. I absolutely agree with you, it does not belong in a neighborhood, but to do what you want to do, we'd have to build it from ground up, as far as I'm concerned, to make it fit our needs, and we can't do that, as we know financially, we can't do it. Every child is worth saving. I really don't care who they are or what they've done, they're worth saving, and that's our job as a school director, and as a school district, and not only that, as a parent and as a person. And I think we still have to investigate this. Mr. Wallace, I never disagree with you until tonight.
I'm about to disagree with you.
I understand that Dr. Butler has made a very good point, I think, as to the overcrowding up there, and I had mentioned to Mr. Reba a couple of months ago that maybe this could be a rent-to-buy or lease-to-buy situation, which then we could do it for our own, but going back to what Mr. Mahalik said, I firmly believe, Bob, that he does not belong in a residential section. I really and truly do believe that. And until we find that place, we have to make do with what's best for our students. And I think right now, at this point in time, Vine Street's the best situation. Now, you can disagree.
No, we always agree, uh-huh, but I'm going to go back to the Plains situation. We left Plains to save money, which didn't happen. We left Plains because we had, we had kids who just took off, who weren't attending. Attendance was a major problem. Attendance is still a major problem. So, all I'm saying is, I'm not moving from building to building until we get it right. Nobody expects us to get it right in one year, and it takes some time. Once we take time, I don't believe in expanding a program until you're doing what you're doing to almost perfection, and I think that takes time. So, I'm voting no, just not to move, to move.
And again, just to reiterate, you're looking at bigger facilities that you can do something with, you're looking at a lower cost. I agree that this is not the final place, but I think we've already made the assignment to Dr. Butler, if I'm not, correct me if I'm wrong, that we want us to see attendance up, and we want to see job, the co-op opportunity, well, I should say, shadowing opportunities improved, and that can be done in whatever. We've got, amongst other things that we need to do, Mr. Wallace, is that we need to go back and look at how we staff these, because you're not going to get, you're not going to get improvement in attendance until you, until you have adequate staffing to get kids in in the daytime. That's a different problem, though.
And if we do those things.
Yep.
The job shadowing, which we said we're going to do, and that, we don't need a bigger facility because the children are going to be out doing what they're doing. We need a bigger facility now. I don't know why we do, because we were given the attendance numbers. I don't see where we're busting at the seams on a day-to-day basis. Maybe certain days when everybody comes, which doesn't happen that often, but, and that's just my opinion, I'm not going to, I'm not arguing about it.
And I would just simply add that in the last two or three weeks, we've been averaging seventy percent attendance, which ranges from, anywhere from eighteen to maybe twenty-four students out of the thirty-three that we have on the roster right now.
So, and how many rooms do we have there classroom-wise?
Mr. Wallace, we have two large rooms, then we have a, if I had to estimate the dimensions, it's probably an eight-by-eight small cubby, if you will, backed by Mr. Watrow's and the nurse, that we're using as a side classroom. And that's embarrassingly small and very difficult. We could have three or four students in there, and we use that kind of as a seclusion area if necessary, but two large classrooms, Mr. Wallace.
So, if we have eighteen children attending, and we can use that side classroom for one-on-one work with two to three students, we're down to fifteen. If Mr. Watrow and Mr. Weston are working one-on-one with the student, we're down to thirteen. If the guidance counselor has one of the students, we're down to twelve. Now we have six kids in a room. To me, that's plenty big enough.
I'll go.
You were saying eighteen to twenty-four, right? You said eighteen to twenty-four, correct?
Yes.
Okay, I don't know why you chose that, Mr. Wallace, is eighteen, why didn't you choose the twenty-four?
When I was at.
If you go twenty-four, then there's nine students in a room, and he said they're very large classrooms, so a nine-to-one ratio isn't too bad, along with individual instruction, plus individual work with the supervisors, plus an individual work with the guidance counselor. You don't need a big building to do that.
And I think, I mean, we knew the dimensions of that building when we went into this last year, and again, I didn't approve, in fact, I voted no to that location because of the location, not the size of it, so.
This discussion should be on improving the program and not the building.
Right, okay, and I agree.
Again, my concern is that, and you guys all brought it up with the, being in the wrong neighborhood, Mr. Moran, who has his place of business right there, personally called me, and I know he called other people, and like, all I'm hearing from one side is how great things are and how manageable these kids are, and they may very, very well be that, but when you have an owner of a business, an established business, that is almost pleading with you to not put the program there, and this board is just defying what the neighborhood is requesting, I can't, I can't but help but vote no for this whole thing, because I just don't think the neighborhood is the proper place for this.
The only other comment I'd make on that is, last year, when we went into the Church Street facility, we had the same kind of complaints. So, I think no matter where you move this, whether you keep it on Church Street, move to Vine Street, wherever you move it, as long as it's in a residential area, you're going to get phone calls.
But Mr. Chapman, and we just continue to look at places in residential areas, so.
It is, but I agree, I'm agreeing with everybody. I agree with.
That's why you're the president, Mr. Chapman.
I agree not to disagree, but I agree with what Bobby said, it needs to be moved from a residential area at some point, but it's not going to happen this year.
Have there been any documented problems of residents in the current situation? Current residents?
None that I'm aware of.
Ms. Yannick, we had one complaint that came to my attention. It turned out that was not our students. It was not the Althea students, let's put it that way. That was one complaint that came to my office.
We did have to shut the building down one day due to the, and it was a safety purpose, I agree with the.
It was an incident in the city.
Right.
For safety reasons.
Right.
There was a fear that it might spill over into the center.
Well, at any given time, there are other district buildings that have been locked down also, for different reasons in the city.
This was actually closed, where we didn't open, again, I mean.
We had to cancel.
Yeah, we canceled, right.
A lot easier to close a building that size, too, than maybe a whole school.
Right.
But, Tony, let me go back to what you're saying about the funeral director. For, I don't know how many years, we had the forestry camp there, and I don't remember anybody complaining about them being there, and they were, they had to be there for what, probably about ten years, maybe longer?
At least ten years.
And I don't remember anybody complaining, and it's the same type of children that were there then that we anticipate putting there now. So, maybe as our counselor said, how come everything comes out at the tenth hour or midnight?
That's what everything.
When something is going to be done? And I think that's a legitimate question, why wasn't there complaints before? Or maybe there was, and they didn't complain to the school district, because the school district didn't run it, I don't know.
Right.
But, and I agree, doesn't belong there, period.
I agree.
But, for lack of a better place?
Any more questions or comments? Mr. Reba, maybe you should do this individually.
Sure. On number thirty-seven, Mr. Bonomo.
No.
Dr. Childs.
Yes.
Mr. John.
Yes.
Mr. Mahalik.
No.
Mr. O'Donnell.
No.
Mr. Wallace.
No.
Ms. Yannick.
No.
And Mr. Chapman.
No.
Motion fails.
Nutrition approve items thirty-eight through forty-one with one motion.
So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments?
Yeah, I will quickly, again, thanking Nutrition Incorporated for the services they provide, our students first and foremost, and our community. Again, they're exceptional, and I am, I'm just very, very pleased with the work that this firm does for us.
Mr. Reba.
Numbers thirty-eight through forty-one, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I have a motion pass.
Transportation approve items forty-two and forty-three with one motion.
So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments? Mr. Reba.
Numbers forty-two and forty-three, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I have a motion passes.
Student activities, athletics, and extracurricular, recommend the following coaching appointments.
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments? Mr. Reba.
Number forty-four, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I have a motion passes.
Facilities and capital projects approve items forty-five through forty-nine with one motion.
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments?
Yeah, under question, number forty-eight, Mr. Guntror or Shemansky, we presented each one of the people that bid on this job with the same specifications? Okay, and what?
I had the fast one, I had sheet.
Okay. Oh, okay, so if it said two codes, there's, okay, good. Perfect, 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 that's great, great, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Reba.
Numbers forty-five through forty-nine, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No on forty-six and forty-seven.
I have it, noting Mr. Wallace's no votes.
Finance approve items fifty through sixty-six with one motion.
So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments?
My only comment is, I wish we could take number fifty-six and make it a lifetime contract, because they're by far the best group that I've dealt with since I've been on the board.
I'll second that. I'll second that.
Anything else?
Yes, question on number fifty-five, what's VALI-C?
That's a company, Dr. Childs, we have various 403B companies, they're voluntary deductions that employees make through payroll deduction, and this is, we have to, the law changed about three or so years ago that we had to appoint one company as the lead company, so Valec is our lead 403B provider, and I believe there's approximately eight others, but it's a voluntary program for employees.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reba.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Reba.
Numbers fifty through sixty-six, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No on fifty-nine.
I have it, noting Mr. O'Donnell's no votes.
I abstain from fifty-nine, the warehouse. First entry on the warehouse.
Okay, noted.
I thought that was you that was working at the warehouse this summer.
That would be a first.
He's all over the place. That's why I abstain, thank you.
He'd never be there, trust me. He runs much better with his kid there.
Tony took care of it?
Sixty-seven.
Yeah, we did.
Presentation of bills.
Are you in a motion and a second?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Questions or comments on the bills? That's unusual. Mr. Reba.
Sixty-seven, A through I, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I have a motion passes.
Superintendent's agenda approve items sixty-eight through seventy-four with one motion.
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments? Mr. Reba.
Numbers sixty-eight through seventy-four, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I have a motion passes.
Item eighty-four, the effective date is May first, two thousand and fifteen.
So moved.
Approve item.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, approve items seventy-five through eighty-eight with one motion.
So moved.
We need a second now.
Second.
Okay, questions or comments?
Just a comment on number eighty-one, I never had Mrs. Eisenberg as a teacher, but she was right across the way when I was at Valley, and I've always heard really good things about Mrs. Eisenberg, so I wish her the best in her retirement.
I would second that, too.
Thank you.
Any teacher that retired this year?
I will be abstaining on number eight, 'cause the quote, "I'm prejudiced based on preconceived notions about the energy sector," so, I'm not taking a dime from them.
Eighty-eight?
Eighty-eight. That was a quote, by the way.
Any other questions or comments?
I, just tagging on with Mr. O'Donnell, has said on number eighty-two, thanking Mrs. Brill for her years of service, very, very effective role. She played how important we've learned our power educators are to our, to our school districts, so we thank her as well.
On number eighty-eight, I would like to second, well, I shouldn't say second, let's try it a little different way here. I'm hoping that the grant that Cabot Oil and Gas Corporation is coming without any tag-alongs, as long as this is a pure, straightforward, I thank them very much for it.
It is pure and straightforward, no tag-alongs.
Mrs. Herman's here, would you like to answer that question?
Tag-alongs.
Yep.
Thank you.
It's wonderful.
Anything else? Mr. Reba?
Numbers seventy-five through eighty-eight, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Abstain on eighty-eight.
Any other no or abstentions? Thank you.
Mr. Shifano is with us this evening, I'd like to congratulate him, he is truly an instructional leader and a dedicated educator, and will certainly be a fine addition, a valuable asset to our administrative staff. Congratulations, Mr. Shifano. Approve items eighty-nine through ninety-five with one motion.
So move.
Second.
Questions or comments?
Just one question, Dr. Butler, for ninety-five, so we will not be using Northeast Counseling then?
Just, if I may jump in, Mr. Mahalik. Catholic Social Services will be providing developmental counseling, and not crisis counseling. If the need for crisis counseling should arise, we will then refer to Northeast Counseling, and they're trained crisis counselors.
Thank you, sir.
This is just group counseling, correct?
Correct, group developmental counseling by Catholic Social Services.
And Dr. Antonelli, that arrangement, that partnership with Northeast is already in place.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is this counseling with Catholic Social Service just for the end of this school year, or will it go into next year also?
Well, we certainly looked, extended into the coming school year, twenty fifteen and sixteen.
Any other questions?
Just a comment, just to applaud the FBLA chapter for sending nine students to Nationals, it's exceptional that they're sending that many students. It's a really great organization that I was a part of for four years, and I wish them the best at Nationals.
Anything else?
If I may comment on number ninety, I'm betting on the kids.
Me, too. I know some of the staff. Ninety-two, is that, is that a resignation, I know, is that a resignation from the district? Yes, he's pursuing other career opportunities in the field of education. He certainly did a wonderful job. He did a magnificent job for us, and will be sorely missed. Big, big loss. The district, we wish him well. Certainly, yes, I concur.
Anything else? Mr. Reba?
Numbers eighty-nine through ninety-five, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion passes.
We have one additional new item. Mr. Chapman, recommend board approved summer hours, proposed for all employees, for the period beginning the week after the completion of the school year, and ending two weeks prior to the start of the new school year, consisting of a five-day, six-and-a-half-hour workday, and directing Attorney Slusser to develop memorandum of understandings with the affected union groups.
So move.
Second.
Questions or comments? A public comment, because it's a new item, it wasn't on the original agenda. Any public comment on that? No? Mr. Reba?
On the new motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion passes.
And that concludes the agenda. I'm sorry, Dr. Antonelli. Have one other item, gonna read this, it's a memorandum of agreement between the Hazelton Area School District and Francis X. Antonelli. I wish I wasn't reading this doc, but I know it's that time. The following memorandum of agreement is entered in between the Hazelton Area School District and Francis X. Antonelli, whereas the parties previously entered into an agreement on the twenty-first day of February, twenty twelve, for the period August second, twenty twelve, through August first, twenty fifteen. Now, therefore, the parties agreed to amend the agreement on page seven, exhibit A, benefits under number one, sick leave and severance payment, and provide the following reimbursement for unused sick days earned, and not used, as retirement, as follows. And I'll be able to show this to anybody that would like to look at it. One to one hundred days, the reimbursement is sixty dollars per day. A hundred and one to two hundred days, it's one hundred dollars per day. And two hundred and one plus days, it's a hundred and sixty-five dollars per day. That's my motion.
All right, we have a motion, do we have a second?
And just, wait, just to put that in line, this is going in line with what the administrators and the teachers' contracts is at this point, so everybody understands, this is getting what you deserve, if you were in one of those capacities also.
Thank you.
The key word in that whole statement was earned. Nothing else needs to be said. Do we have a second?
I second, I, no, I made a motion.
You did, okay, questions, any other questions or comments? Mr. Reba?
Public comment.
Public comment.
Sorry, public comment on this, too, it's a new item. Any public comment? Now, Mr. Reba.
On the new motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion passes.
All right.
Can I, I'm sorry, and again, Dr. Antonelli, and I know we still have a little bit of time, but thank you for everything you've done. Certainly, again, it's difficult for me, but I know that you're gonna have a wonderful, long, healthy retirement, do lots of camping, and hunting, and fishing, and teaching, and probably...
Golfing.
Golfing, whatever it is.
Man, he just, he just spelled out thirty hours a day.
Most people also don't know that Dr. Antonelli has two thousand sick days. 'Cause he never took off.
Just about. Anyhow, we do thank you for that time, and I know this can be a tough act to follow, and in fact, so tough, that the board has decided that we wanted to open this up, the process to hiring the next superintendent, to allow all the stakeholders, which obviously, the community is as important, and as large of a stakeholder as anyone. And, again, because it's such a big spot to fill, upon the retirement of Dr. Antonelli, we are looking for your participation. We did a first round, last Thursday. We have four candidates, has been already reported on by our local media, two of them are in-house, two of them are out of house. We do have a second round planned, and we just received notice today that we're gonna have to change the second round, which was going to be next Thursday, the thirtieth, but due to a scheduling conflict with one of the candidates, and the amount of time that is put into this, and the amount of people that are gonna be involved in this, we decided, as a board, that we would move them. And we're looking right now, for that to take place on Friday, May eighth. So the second round, be Friday, May eighth, I know Friday is either really, really good for some people, and not for any, for others. But we certainly don't want to have that deter you, we hope you could still be a part. The community portion of it will begin about five P.M., it will take place right in here. And when we say the community, we mean the entire community, and that, you know, it's taxpayers, parents, teachers, staff workers. You're gonna be able to ask questions, you're gonna be able to rate the answers of the candidates, and then those sheets will be provided to the board, so we can consider your thoughts and gather your input. But the date now is May eighth, Friday evening. We already do have a good amount of people from the community, that are scheduled and wanting to be here. We will allow every seat to be filled, so seventy-five people can be a part of this process. During the school day, the candidates will be meeting with students, be meeting with teaching staff, administrators, as well as our business office. But the evening is the chance for our community, so, if you can, please, mark on your calendars, contact Jackie McCall here at the district office, five-seven-zero-four-five-nine-three-one-one-one, extension.
Three-one-two-two.
Three-one-two-two.
What if it's after the first?
After the first, I would ask you to please call Mr. Tony Reba, at four-five-nine...
You should've said Tony Benomo.
Tony doesn't answer his phone either, that would...
Don't I know it.
Call Mr. Mahalik, he doesn't answer it either.
Mr. Chapman? Is there any other public comment on non-agenda items? Please state your name and address, and what you'll be talking about.
My name is Casey Hirsime, I'm from Hazel Township. I would like to talk to you about the policy number eight-oh-five, emergency preparedness, as well as policy number eight-twenty, crisis management. In regards to emergencies that take place for our kids during the day. The policy eight-oh-five mentions bomb threats specifically, saying that the district shall include provisions for responding appropriately to bomb threats and emergency preparedness plans. And in policy number eight-twenty, under crisis management, the crisis response says, quote, "In a crisis, the following guidelines apply. Number one, building principals shall prepare information about the incident, which shall be provided to teachers, and sent home to parents and guardians." We understand that in certain situations, bringing that sort of information can be difficult for the parents in that moment. However, we feel as parents, that we should not have to rely on social media, or my six-year-old, to find out about lockdowns and bomb threats in our school buildings. This policy is suggested, actually, it's not suggested. It says, "The district in cooperation with the local emergency management agency, and the Pennsylvania Emergency Management Agency, shall develop and implement a comprehensive response, and it should be reviewed annually." We'd like, upon the next annual review, to look at including parents in the chain of communication, especially during emergency situations, whether that is a bomb threat, lockdown, school evacuations.
Any comments on that, from anyone here? We appreciate your comments, I mean, I was in that position once as a principal, so I know where you're coming from, but we'll take that into consideration, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I make a motion to adjourn?
I think there was one...
Any other?
Yes, come on up.
Okay.
Sorry. It's all right. Yes, you would state your name and your address, and what you'll be speaking about?
Kelly Velovich, in Hazel Township, and I'm speaking about the same situation. Good evening, my name is, again, Kelly Velovich, I have two sons that attend Freeland Elementary Middle School. One child is in third grade, the second one is in first grade. The reason I'm here tonight is to voice my concern due to an incident that occurred on April eighth, at Freeland Elementary. On the evening of April eighth, I received a text message from another mother, asking if my children were upset and nervous to go to school the next day. I was confused as to why she was asking me this question. She informed me that there was a bomb threat earlier that day. I asked both of my children what had happened. My son that is in third grade told me his classmates and teacher were locked in a bathroom for about a half hour. He said that the kids were crying, and he was trying to calm them down, telling them that it was just a drill. My son that is in first grade told me nothing had happened, that he was in the cafeteria watching a movie. Needless to say, I'm even now more confused as to what happened that day in school. I contacted other parents, as well as posting to social media, asking if children told them what had happened earlier that day. The answers were all the same. There was announcement that the school was on lockdown, and the kids were placed in bathrooms and closets. The following day, I contacted Mrs. Ledger, school guidance counselor, to find out exactly what had happened. She told me that she would forward the message to the principal, Mr. Barletta, and he would be in touch with me. He contacted me right away. He said that the safety of our children and his staff was his number one priority, I do believe that without a doubt. He said that there would, there was a bomb threat in the boys' middle school bathroom, and after a full investigation, it was nothing to be concerned about. What I am asking today is that the Hazelton Area School District, consider a protocol that would inform parents in the event of a school lockdown. A text, an email, a slip of paper that states what happened, so we are able to talk to our children about it, and ensure them that they are safe. I would prefer to hear it from the school, in the event of a lockdown, not social media. This ensures that we, as parents, are receiving the correct information. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else from the board up here? I need a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion.
Second? Do I have a second?
Second.
Meeting adjourned.